I mean, he kind of went over my thing that I told him. They think that maybe there's something. I'm not sure.
Good luck to each.
Thank you.
Deep breath and a little rope.
It's the street.
Excuse me, sir, did you have to really wear that Philadelphia eagle?
And they're lying.
Don't worry, it won't last.
Alan's got his Eagles tee shirt on.
All right, let's get this thing rolling. Call the meeting to order Becky Show, all councilmen are present. Or council members, I'm sorry. Used to all be men. All right, if we all stand if we can for the invocation, we've got Bill Gillis coming up to do that. They're going to declare allegiance afterwards.
Let's pray together. Father in heaven, we want to just praise you tonight for all good things because every good and perfect gift comes from you. For life and health and strength. And for all that we hold dear, Lord, we just lift up our, our hands to you and thanks. For this great nation in which we live, we take for granted so often. The wonderful freedoms that we share. Father, tonight I, I ask your help and your assistance for all who are struggling in our country. From the east to the west, just bless those who are facing ice and frigid temperatures in the east. And bless those citizens in California that are facing the fires and losing their homes, their properties, their lives. Prove that you would just look down in mercy upon them and all those who are struggling in life. Now, Lord God, we just ask that you'll bless these community leaders this evening as they discuss and as they make decisions that will affect the citizens of Covington and beyond. I pray, Father, you would unite them together and give them a sense of purpose and a sense of your will. Help them to do the right thing. And that which would be pleasing to you. And we praise these things in the name of the one who loved us, gave himself up for us. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every team and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
I'll second.
I'll make a motion. Make a motion except the agenda is written.
I'll second.
Mr. Chair, I believe there's a need to add two closed meeting items.
Correct. We need to add the closed session after council meeting to the agenda.
So be it.
We got a vote on that?
We got a vote.
Now we approve.
All right, do you want to?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of closed session after the meeting.
Okay, uh, Bill Rollcall back in place.
Mrs. Crowder? Agreed, yes? Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Wob?
Four.
Mr. Forbes?
Four.
Mr. Carson?
Four.
Approval of, of council's bylaws and rules of procedure?
So I have a few questions on those before we approve of it, is that okay?
Your opinion?
Okay, so, um, I actually read the, um, bylaws back in May and then I didn't read them again until Friday night. And the reason why I was basically reading them is because after we had the meeting last Friday where we nominated the mayor and the vice mayor, things just didn't happen exactly the way I thought they would. By the way, I remembered them from the bylaws, but I'd never seen one of them happen before, so I wasn't really sure. But I did reread it and it wasn't done exactly the way it is in the bylaws. Um, I'm sure it's all done legally, but I didn't know if like some of the things that are in the bylaws, if we don't need them to be exactly the way they are, maybe we need to make some changes in some of it and, um, if not follow, at least follow the bylaws that we have. Um, on section 2.7, um, I kind of thought that after we made a motion to nominate someone, it says in here that we would, whoever nominates them would discuss what their opinion is for the qualifications for the nominees. And then we would close the nomination process and then go call for a vote. And then once the mayor is voted on, he or she shall assume the position and conduct the meeting from like vice mayor. And we didn't quite do things that way, so I think it kind of had me a little, I don't want to say messed up, but I just didn't feel like I had all the information that I might have needed or might have liked to have had, although, um, I mean, it's done and I'm sure it was done legally. Um, I also have a, um, a question about the agenda, which is 4.1. We don't actually do things that are in the exact order that's in here and we haven't like for the past three years. Since I've been here, so I didn't know if we might want to amend that before we actually approve it so that it is done the way we actually do it here in the city. That's something else too. Well, we have, after we have public comment, or after we have public hearings, this is section 4.1, which is the same section, but it's number 10. Whenever we've had public hearings in the past, people have been able to speak to council afterwards before it was a vote, or at least I've seen it a couple of times. But in the bylaws, it says that there should be no comments during citizen comments on the matter, which has already been subject to the previous public hearing, where there is no final vote has been taken by council. So if this isn't, if this isn't something that we normally practice, because I know that people have spoken at the following meeting and even at the end of a meeting before on it, then we might want to change that. And the only other thing I have, which I spoke with our attorney, is on section 7.1, it's about the appointments and we do have that on the agenda for tonight. But it says, "Members of all boards, authorities, commissions and committees shall be appointed by the majority of council after review of qualification and discussion in closed meetings." So I didn't know if before we were to do any of the appointments, we needed to have a closed meeting to make sure that we all understand, I guess, the qualifications. It kind of what we were talking about prior to, but everyone else didn't hear us. That's all.
All right, boss.
Any questions? Like, am I not understanding everything correctly?
Yeah, um, well, obviously your bylaws and rules of procedures are your rules of procedures. This is how you want a meeting run. So if you want to change something, make a difference somehow, that's completely up to you to decide. If you feel like taking something out, adding something in, you just let me know. I'm happy to draft it into the, into the bylaws and you can take care of it. So for purposes of the discussion that you had earlier, if you feel like it may not be necessary to have discussions in closed sessions about appointees, I can remove that, that's fine. This is just a carryover of rules that have been in place for a while now and no one's really requested any changes be done. And again, here's the other thing too. The rules of procedure can effectively be set aside by council at any time if they so choose to do so. And a lot of it has to do with the way that the, the mayor runs the meetings, right? Because the mayor is the presiding officer. So if the mayor wants to be a stickler to the rules, he'll be a stickler to the rules. If he wants to be a little more lax, like allowing citizen comment at different times, if council's okay with that, then it's fine. He doesn't necessarily have to say that specifically, you hear. But again, these rules are just basic rules for you to run your meeting by, but if you wish to set aside any of those rules, you can do so at any time. So you tell me whether or not you want the changes and I'm happy to do them.
Is there any of them you won't change?
I don't think.
I think they're fine like they are.
I think they're fine. That's something that needs to be, if we got into that, it'd have to be later, later, later. We can't just sit here and do that right now.
Yeah, because you're. So if it's not.
I mean, like, like I said, if you, if you want to change something, um, maybe send, put, put everything down in email that, that you, that you want changed or whatever. Send it to Mr. Dressler, he can disseminate it to city council and you guys think about it and then you can come back at your next meeting and make amendments. So even if you adopt this today, you can amend it at any time, right? So if this happens to get adopted tonight, fine, we can come back next month and amend it and put new language in it based on whatever you all decide. But I would certainly recommend that you at least adopt the bylaws now, so you have the rules going forward to your next meeting. Well, and for this meeting, quite frankly. And then you can, like I said, you can change them at any time. Okay?
Okay, we're back to approval.
Excuse me, real quick, Mark probably asked you, do we need, does council need to go ahead and appoint Becky in the temporary status right now? Do we?
Yeah, sure, she'll need to be appointed.
Okay, so Ed, as you're going through the approval of our council bylaws and rules of procedure, then council would approve Becky being our interim clerk?
Okay, approval of council bylaws and rules of, and rules. Uh, we also want to add Becky is our temporary clerk. Uh, I need a motion on her.
Motion.
Motion for pardon.
You did it. Okay, anybody want a second?
Second.
Take the vote, please Becky.
Mrs. Crowder?
I'm ready.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Wob?
Four.
Mr. Forbes?
Four.
Mr. Carson?
Four.
All right, presentations, is Jerry, is Jeremy Holmes here?
Yes.
Come on up, sir, and let us know what's going on with the Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission.
Thank you very much for making sure this is, there we go, just want to make sure it's working. Mayor Carson, I'm members of city council, thank you very much for having me here tonight. Jeremy Holmes, I'm the executive director of the Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission. Um, I'm going to talk to you a little bit tonight about just a couple of the projects we've worked on in the last year, which have engaged the city of Covington or otherwise been available for your support. And a couple of things we've got coming up in the year to come and just let you know a little bit of what we're working on and the resources that you can tap into uh, through the regional commission. I do always like to take this opportunity to provide a little bit of a refresher for those who may not be familiar with what the regional commission is. I know we have some new city council members, so this may be a learning opportunity. But we are one of 21 planning districts created by the state to, and charged by the code of Virginia to work with our member governments around issues of greater than local significance, which basically means if something crosses a border into a neighboring locality, if there's something that you share with your neighbors, a challenge or an opportunity, we're here to help bring resources to that, convene discussions around it, bring state federal resources to addressing those issues. Ideally so that we create more cost-effective solutions to, to things that may be affecting more than, than one locality. Half of our work approximately is in transportation, as you can imagine, roads that don't stop at borders. Um, but the rest of our work falls into community development, economic development. You'll see tonight, work that we're doing against with the opioid crisis, grant writing assistance and our legislative work that we've been doing specifically with Covington. Uh, we are, we think a pretty good investment for every dollar that we get in local dues, we leverage that for another $11 and state federal and other resources that come right back to this community, either through the commission's programming or in direct services provided to our member governments. As, as an example, we received some money a couple of years ago from Virginia Housing to support affordable housing development and some of that money went to the Rivermont School project here to help with the construction, with the, the construction of that project. We don't do our work on our own though, we do need you. We need our local governments to tell us what you need, to ask for assistance, to participate in our process and our meetings. Um, so we really appreciate your participation. Mr. Dressler is very engaged with us and does not hesitate to ask for, for help. We really appreciate his participation and look forward to continuing to, to work with council on issues in the future. So a couple of areas we're doing, and this is not meant to be comprehensive, this is just showing sort of the breadth of the activities that happen at the regional commission. Um, we do house a program called the collective response that's a, a regional response to the opioid crisis. And one of the big things that we do with that program is engage with the Virginia opioid abatement authority on accessing those funds through the grant programs that they offer. Um, there's local and cooperative grants, what we're really interested in is working with our localities on accessing the cooperative grant pot, so that's when more than one locality works together on trying to build a program or access resources. This year, uh, we developed a pre-application process, the sort of demonstration project with Roanoke City and Roanoke County, but it's available to every locality in our region. And this is a way that if you've got a program, so entrepreneur or your CSP or someone wants to access that funding, um, they can submit a pre-app through us and our collective response stakeholders and advisory committee, who are all experts in this field, can sort of score those projects on, is this viable? Is this going to do what it says it does? Is this a strong grant application so that you know, if, if you were to choose to go forward with making an application to OAA, you'd have a good sense that this is, this is a good application? Or can we expand this to cover our neighbors or something like that? Um, this is our first year doing it, we just literally wrapped that process up last week. Uh, we're reviewing scores tomorrow. Um, and one of the things we're going to do next month is what we call a gap analysis. So what didn't get asked? What do we know, what needs are there in law enforcement or workforce training or reentry programs that no one asked for funding from our region? And how can we develop some programs for next grant cycle to make sure we go after that funding and get some need met? So we will be back in touch with you later, uh, in February most likely with maybe some ideas that came out of that analysis. Um, if there's any projects that you want to pursue then through the OAA. So that's one of the areas, we, and we also offer ongoing technical assistance. So if you or any local business or nonprofit wants to access that funding but doesn't know how to go about that, you can call us and we can help walk through that process and even help you access that funding on your behalf. That's one of the areas that we're doing work. I mentioned also our legislative work. Two years ago, we started the first regional legislative agenda. Um, as you're probably all aware, the power in Virginia has very much shifted to northern Virginia and the eastern part of the state. And we want to make sure that those of us in southwest Virginia and the rural parts of Virginia don't get lost and make sure that our needs are met in Richmond. Um, so one of the ways we went about that recently is we organized a lunch here with the Sonic Theater in Clifton Forge, just focused on the Allegheny Highlands, Craig and Bonita, our Appalachia Regional Commission communities. Uh, delegate Austin and representatives from Senator Head's office were there. And this was a chance for you to get up and say what you needed, you know, what were your challenges? But also what was going well and what you wanted to make sure continued to get support from Richmond so that you didn't lose momentum. I think that last part was really important. I do need to say that Covington has no bigger cheerleader than Alan Dressler. Um, and he did a really great job standing up in front of the folks in Richmond and talking about what a success story Covington has been. But also we, we continue to have needs and Richmond needs to respect those and support that. So we had a really great conversation with delegate Austin and Head and it was really important for that relationship building. And we were glad you were there and helped host things and, and continued, um, our advocacy in Richmond. So we're very excited to, to do that. One of the last programs I want to highlight is our Ready Appalachia, our grant writing bench. And I talked about this a little bit last year when I was here. This is a pot of funding the Appalachia Regional Commission has provided us. Uh, where we've hired, essentially, we, we hired a bunch of professional federal grant writers that you can access for free to access any kind of pot of funding that you want. Um, and these are folks, we've got five folks, we went through a competitive process to bring them on board, who have sex, success in a range of different federal programs. Um, we've already used them in our first year to tap into a couple of research efforts to identify funding opportunities. Uh, Allegheny County looking at water and sewer infrastructure and needs there and how we get those funded. We looked at an emergency radio service in Craig and, and more ways that we get creative, um, funding to access that. Uh, some projects in Bonita, we just started, um, working with Clifton Forge and the Sonic Theater on identifying sustainable funding for that cultural organization. So that money is there, we have until October to spend the rest of it. And I just want to put this out as a reminder that, um, just ask for help, these folks, we've got these folks on board. Um, we try to send out a weekly email, this like what are some of the federal grant opportunities we've seen this week? But if you've got a need and don't even know kind of what funding matches that, um, these folks are experts in the research. So that's why we've done some research projects as well as some grant writing projects. So please know that that's there, the A R C is probably not going to repeat this program, so this is kind of our one shot to get access to this funding, but we really want to make sure it gets spent, um, on your behalf and we can do some things to support Covington through that program. So just call me, send me an email, we'll get you connected to the bench. So I want to highlight those three programs just to show a little bit of some of the things we've done in the last year and the range of work and legislative, you know, like grant writing assistance and so forth. These are a couple of things that we've got on deck that are going to create opportunities for Covington to tap into. Um, we are starting a regional truck parking study. Uh, this is out of our transportation program and this is to address, um, some of our communities are really struggled with improper or illegal truck parking as they're waiting for last mile delivery, um, the lack of truck park and resource, resources that the state provides. So we're going to look at what is our freight demand, where are trucks parking, why are they parking in places that might be unsafe for them to be? Um, and what can we do with local policies, policy of M D O T? And working with the trucking industry to make sure they don't do that. Um, and so we'll have some, some policy recommendations that come out of that. That should be done in June. We're about to have a kickoff meeting probably the next week or two with the consultant who will lead that project. Um, the other thing we've got going right now is our regional pre-disaster hazard mitigation. That's a mouthful to say all that, but it's our hazard mitigation plan. This is a, a required product, uh, from FEMA that makes us eligible to access funding in the case that there is some kind of disaster in our region. Um, as an example, a number of years ago, a tornado set down, touched out in Lynchburg. Um, they did not have this plan in place and so they could not access some of the funding to deal with the results of that disaster from FEMA. So it's a, it's a necessary precondition in the awful case where something happens. As we saw with Helene though, it's not as unlikely as we think. So this is going in place, we've already engaged the, the Covington and we've engaged the region behind us, we're about halfway through with it. We expect to be done this fall. Um, but just so you know that this is underway and this is something that we're doing to make sure that you can access these resources if necessary. And then the last thing is our comprehensive economic development strategy. See, trucks, hazards and economic development, we kind of do a little bit of everything at the commission. Um, but this is another sort of precondition for funding, um, project. This is establishing the region's priorities for economic development and what kinds of investment we might be looking for for industrial site development, workforce training, um, what kind of infrastructure is necessary, access roads, that kind of thing. Um, a lot of that requires projects to be in this plan before we can get funding from E D A or U S D A or some other federal programs. Our focus with this update, right now, if you look at our plan, it's a hundred pages of a lot of data. We're trying to narrow that down so it's a really actionable plan that has some project priorities such as the pad site and other places that are set up, uh, with implementation and funding, you know, pathways in line. So we can immediately go from that and start working with our federal partners to get some of these things funded. Um, we have just started that, it needs to be done in June, so we will wrap that up in June. And as one of the upcoming meetings in March, we'll actually have representatives from E D A and U S D A present to talk to us about how they use this plan to help them approve funding so that we can make sure that it is in line with those federal needs. Um, so these are some things that are ongoing, but that we'll, we'll be able to support your projects in the future and we appreciate your engagement as we kind of go through these planning processes. It's kind of all I wanted to talk about, we could be here all night if we want to talk about the full commission work program. Um, I will leave you with this last, with that last note, that we are starting our work program process for next year. Um, so we will start that formally in a couple of weeks after the January commission meeting. And we will send some information to Mr. Dressler, um, and to our, to all our commission members. This is how we get project ideas from you for next year. What do you need? What plans do you need? Um, what are you looking for? What funding needs do you have? Uh, we work with all our member localities, collect all that and we kind of formalize that to say, here are the things we're going to commit to doing July through June fiscal year 26. And what resources are we going to need to do that? So we always leave room to tackle things throughout the year, but this is a really important step for us, understanding if Covington has some big needs, let's know them now so we can make sure we get that in the work program and carve out the time to provide the assistance that's needed. So look for that coming up in the next couple of weeks. Again, I appreciate your time tonight and willingness to, to listen to me talk. I'm happy to answer any questions, um, that you have and as always, please reach out for support if there's anything that we can do to be of assistance.
Jeremy, thank you a lot for coming, be careful going home.
Yeah. I was stuck a little bit behind a log truck on the way out, it was a little sketchy, but I think, I think we'll be okay. And I would also recognize Mr. Carson for your presence at the legislative function. I'm glad that you were there to help promote Covington to work with our legislators.
We do have the cheerleaders.
Yes, it's the best.
Very good.
Citizens allowed to ask questions?
Sure.
Are citizens allowed to ask?
You can ask a question, sir.
Okay, I, as a citizen of Covington, I do have a couple of questions. I was paying attention to you, where you can, you're, you're correct about Mr. Dressler. Very, very fond of his, uh, love for this community. Uh, how? How much has the city of Covington received from your organization, let's say, in the last five years? Approximately?
Yeah, so we don't, we generally don't, as a commission, do direct funding. What we do is like pass through from other federal grants, like the Virginia Housing Authority. I don't know that number off the top of my head, but that grant came through when it was awarded for the Rivermont School.
Okay.
Yeah, I could, unfortunately, I don't have an exact number. We could do, look at the value of the projects and other things that we have done on Covington's behalf and look at that, at that number, but sorry.
So just that ties me into my next question. What have we received? Is the Rivermont School all that we have received from this commission?
No, that, I just wanted to provide that as one example. You know, we do a lot of work, we're a planning agency, so a lot of what we do is setting up our communities to go through whatever required planning process is often necessary for future funding. So we do a lot of work, for example, with regional, with rural transportation, so working with VDOT to get things in place so that VDOT is able to construct things down the line. There's a lot of processes in place that we assist with. As an example, our, the economic development work that we do, that's a lot of times that's just facilitating, you know, with, say, a federal agency, with E D A to be able to make those connections to get projects funded.
You know where I'm going here. We don't get much E D A.
Yeah, and I agree.
And, and, and I mean, they're doing everything they can. I understand that. And I support everything they do, but doesn't seem to be a lot of dollars funneled back into Covington.
Yeah, and so when I talked about the sets process, for example, you're exactly right. None of our localities, despite being a designated area to receive E D A funding, we have not been very successful anywhere across the region in receiving E D A. So part of the goal with this next plan update is to focus on, you know, and work more closely with E D A, like what do you want, how can we best set up projects, specific projects to get funding? So it's driving that next update.
So it might be better to offer some training on what to ask for. I mean, I'm sure Mr. Dressler knows exactly what to ask for, but like people like myself, Chief Smith and other people in the, in the community who, you know, have the best interest, we need to know what to, what to ask him to help us to try and get the key. I hope that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. And I think a lot of what we try to do, and some, so some federal agencies, A R C, E D A as examples, they go to the regional agency first. And there's, like us or in other states, there's equivalents to identify, to try to identify needs and to establish those relationships. So yeah, funneling questions through us and trying to figure out, you know, what does that federal funder need or state funder need? And particularly, most of these folks like multi-jurisdictional, big official programs. So if we can have that conversation and say, well, is there a need across the Highlands that we can maybe package into this, would that be more successful? But it is, it is a process that we're working through.
And my last question is, you showed the picture of the FEMA. You know, a lot of areas in Covington are in flood-prone areas. Recently, you mentioned Helene. If, if something like that were to happen in the city of Covington, would we be told that you can go ahead and file for your $750 from the federal government? Or would we be entitled to the proper amount that people have insurance for and those who are, you know, underinsured?
Yeah, so that's, the sort of individual funding is different from the big infrastructure recovery. So like this plan, for example, would be one of the things, say, if a bridge got washed out or a road got washed out from rivers or something like that. This is the thing that would allow you to go after U S D A or D O T or whatever kind of funding that was made available. As a, as one example, a lot of southwest Virginia that got hit pretty bad with Helene, a bunch of money was made available to the Appalachian Regional Commission to try to rebuild that. So their planning districts were working with them to move that infrastructure funding into those communities. So that would be an example. Big infrastructure, something like that is where we would help or at least get, you know, to the, whatever extent we could make that process more efficient, facilitate that position, that conversation with FEMA. I hope that, I hope that's, that's helpful.
Thank you.
Counsel, say something? Hey, this, this is a question for counsel and ask you to. Is it possible that some citizens can get together, like the funding and grants, somebody who knows business-wise and what y'all do and work with y'all to get more grants and more funding for the city of Covington? I mean, can a group of people come together and do that? Do y'all have a problem with that? Is it possible?
Like a citizens group?
Yeah, like a citizen group. Even with help from y'all.
We'd have to, I mean, council's got to all agree. I can't just agree.
I didn't say you, I said y'all. I'm not pinpointing any certain person, I'm saying y'all as a council.
I would see reason why not.
Generally, as long as our locality comes to us and says, we would like you to research this project or identify this funding source or apply for this grant, if there's a citizens group that's identified a need and city council comes to us and says, we support, you know, go after this.
I mean, it would, it would help the county, it would help the city. I mean, and people could help the council too, you know, instead of laying everything at y'all's feet. You know, let, let some of the businessmen, I mean, Lee, Lee was in here somewhere, I mean, hell, he's got a heck of a business head on him, you know, and would help with the funding and the grant, you know, for the city.
Yeah, we're, we're, whatever council comes to us to ask for, you know, that's our job from the state is to try to help you access those resources. So however, if you want to develop those projects at some of our way, we're absolutely receptive to that as long as it's something that the community has gotten behind and decided they wanted, has kind of come to throw over for our process.
I want to say thank you. Appreciate your time. Safe travels back home. For the folks and some of the questions, thank you all. These folks are a wonderful resource to us. We're not all about, we like to, but we're not discussing all nickels and dimes when we communicate. It's helping us with direction. And I will say that they are very actively involved in economic development in the Allegheny Highlands. For those that are not aware, we have a joint pad site, Covington and Allegheny County, a couple miles down the road. And these folks along with the V E D P and some other folks in Richmond are actively, I say actively, promoting the Highlands in our pad site. So we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Safe travels.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Sheriff Kyle Moore with the Allegheny Sheriff's Department.
Good evening, members of council, Mr. Dressler and citizens of Allegheny County. Thank you for allowing me to be in front of you this evening. First, I guess, accept my apology for the manner in which I went about the request from the Board of Supervisors. Being new at this job, you know, I'm still learning. And so at the last Board Supervisor meeting, I appeared before them to request an increase in the retirement multiplier for the law enforcement and jail deputies that work at the Allegheny County Sheriff's Office. The previous multiplier was 1.7%. And those of you who know V R S know that you take the amount of years and multiply it times the multiplier and then take your highest three-year salary and that tells you how much you make in your retirement. Well, .15 sure does make a difference after 30 years of, of service. And as you know, law enforcement officers don't make a ton of money. They're not in it for the money, they're in it for, because that's what they're supposed to do in, in life. They, that's their path, if you will. So I approached the board and the board approved my recommendation to them as of February 1st. Approximately 10 minutes afterward, Mr. Bennett called timeout and said, hey, I think we just messed up. Did you talk to the city? And I said, Mr. Bennett, I did not, but I will be happy to speak with them first thing tomorrow morning. And that's exactly what I did. I contacted Mr. Dressler by phone on my way into work and I think I called him on his way in. Maybe he had already taken care of a few other things, which he normally is out pretty early. But, and I explained the situation to him. In speaking with Ms. Adcock, actually, two things coming from Ms. Adcock. She told me to inform you that if the money between now and the 1st of July for the current budget year is an issue, she has the money to carry over the multiplier for the next six months. And then she also said that the amount of money, the cost to the county will be approximately $45,000 and I think the cost to the city is going to be approximately $11,000 per year. And that covers nearly 54 police officers that work for the county and their retirement. And whenever they, you know, they get to a retirement age, most police officers don't make it past 60. They're not able to make it most of the time to their full Medicare retirement age because their body just gives out on them by the time they, they usually hit between 55 and 60. If you look at the packet I gave you, each of you has a packet, there's a lot of reading and a lot of numbers in there. And I don't expect you to probably read the entire thing, but there are some very interesting numbers in that packet. I got all the numbers for the entire year of 2024. It tells you how many phone calls my dispatchers answered. It tells you how many miles the deputies traveled. It tells you how many mental health cases that my deputies worked. It is all encompassing. It, it pretty much covers everything. It is some, some good reading if you, if you care to know what your law enforcement officers are doing. And I will counsel that with, the city of Covington's police officers are doing a lot of work as well, very similar to what I provided you tonight. I'm not here to advocate for them, but as you know, you know, it doesn't really matter what color we wear when we're out here working. If it happens in the city, we're all there. And if it happens out in the county, we're all there. So it is, it is my first duty to apologize to you for the way I went about this, but I am here to ask that you give favorable consideration to the, the .15 addition to the retirement supplement for the Allegheny County Sheriff's Deputies. And I think I covered everything in the letter that I had presented you. If you have any questions, I would be glad to answer those.
Kyle, the county is willing to take it through June and we would pick it up starting in July.
Yes, sir.
That's a, to me, it's a lot better possibility for the city of Covington to say, Al, you could put it in your budget for next year.
Yes, sir. I, I agree with that and, and as I said, I didn't know the entire process whenever, whenever I approached the board. And Ms. Adcock has been very friendly to me and she explained to me the way that I should have went about this and also that, that she did have the extra money, that it would cover the remainder of the year and that the city of Covington could pick up July 1st with the, with the additional money. And like I said, it's approximately $11,000 starting July 1st.
Because we, we budgeted all our money out for this year.
I understand that, Mr. Carson.
And to come up with it would be pretty hard.
Yes, sir, I understand.
We'd have to cut somewhere else and I don't want to do that if we don't have to. But I think it's a good program. I'm not saying we don't want to help, we do want to help.
We could cut your pay.
Yeah, hey, I don't get enough here to even get one of them.
Yes, sir, I understand. And I'm not asking you to put the city of Covington in a, in a financial pinch. I'm not doing that at all. But, you know, I feel that this is a way to help those officers with their retirement income versus their current income. And me being of that age, I know how important retirement income is to someone who is, is reaching that age. There's a lot of factors that have to be considered to include insurance.
And I know, I want you to know, Perdoff, but everybody in the city supports your offer.
Yes, sir.
And we thank the world of them. I mean, it takes a special person to be a officer.
I greatly thank each of you for the support. You know, I, I see it on a daily basis, so.
Yeah, I think Brad's got some questions.
Really? What, what he said and what you said answered all four of my questions at the same time, so I'm good.
I'm available anytime. If you think of a question, please call, ask, anything I can, can offer you, you know, whether you're in the city or the county, it doesn't matter, I'll be glad to help.
Well, this, so this will be in your budget for next year?
Yes, sir.
Is that a, pretty much a set amount going forward?
Yes, sir. It's a, it is set amount. It's a, it's a based upon a percentage. It's a, you know, multiplier that they, they figure out. Ms. Adcock could probably answer that question or Mr. BB could answer the question probably better than I can.
Is this something we need to vote on today, Al?
Well, sure, January 3rd.
You've got to know about the 30th.
No, sir. I, I, to, to be quite honest with you, the way that I have been explaining it and Mr. Dressler may know better, it, it's in effect. It, it just, it, it depends upon when the city of Covington. And I realize having a long conversation with Mr. Dressler that, that, you know, things have been done in the past that weren't always welcomed within this chamber. And I'm not trying to force feed anything to the council. It's not my intention, that's why I'm here to apologize. And, and if anybody needs to eat crow, it's going to be me. I'll be the one to do it. I'll accept that responsibility. But, you know, unfortunately, with the vote from the Board of Supervisors, it became, you know, passed effective February 1st. Okay?
All right. So do you want to come back to us or?
It, it doesn't matter to me either way. Lance, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I could, it could be done by email or I could come back. It doesn't matter.
Want to do that now?
Well, if counsel, basically, he's made his presentation. If counsel, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but if counsel is comfortable with moving on as we are today and then including this in the budget, it just becomes a budget process. And, and it's been agreed by the county that they'll pick up the remaining from now until June 30th. So there, there's no need for any action, correct?
Not unless city council wishes to go ahead and start participating in that.
Right. Correct.
Thank you. Thanks, y'all, right now.
If Susan's got the money, I'd rather her do it and not put us in the buy. Then we'll jump in there and do life, you put it in the budget and roll from there.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate your time tonight and y'all have a blessed evening.
All right.
Citizens comments. Anybody sign up back there? Jay, would you look?
Look.
Okay.
I would like to speak as a citizen.
Okay.
I would like to agree with you.
Okay, BB. Come on up and state your name and where you live and all those good things.
David Bryan of Gust Avenue, City of Lewis, Covington. First and foremost, I would like to say that postal personnel, be it postmasters, clerks, carriers, city carriers, rural carriers, highway contract carriers, whatever they be, from Island County down to the city of Covington here, I'm sure you're aware and you, you yourselves have experienced delays in postal correspondence, sometimes taking you as much as five days to go across the street to your neighbor, two weeks to go to Clifton Forge. And there's some things that take place and some programs that have been implemented over the last couple of years that you probably need to be aware of that, hey, it's not because our local folks aren't getting the job done, but sometimes you don't have the mail to get it done with. If it's not here, it can't be delivered. But our processing center in the Richmond area is one of the lowest performing in the country. Not in this region, in the United States. In fact, it's performed so poorly that both Senator King and Warner have been involved in some of those postal issues. And in the way things are done now, more resources are targeted for larger areas. You'd say, well, why would they do that? It's not because it's more people, but it's because it's more mail volume. So their performance scores, if you can get the task accomplished in a large urban area, it adds more pieces to the percentage of mail that's successful. Whereas those pieces in rural America, including Allegheny, Bath and Highland County, they don't generate nearly as many pieces. So if they sort of go by the wayside, it doesn't impact the scores as much. Also... Also, are you aware that you can go into Covington Post Office this coming Saturday and be willing to pay for express mail, anywhere from $20 to $50? Or just mail, regular letter or piece of party mail? Do you know that it can't get to your neighbor right beside you? And the reason for that is it doesn't leave until Monday. There is no outgoing mail in this location here on Saturday, not a single piece. So you want to mail a family member or a close neighbor their birthday card for Monday? You'll find it at Covington Post Office still. And that's not the fault of the local employees. They're operating in a system where the mail has to go through the processing center. But if it doesn't leave for the processing center until on Monday, it doesn't stand a chance. And if it doesn't clear that processing center that very night, which the standards don't require it to now, that card is going to be late. It could be a check. It could be $20 in cash anonymously wanting to help someone out, but it's not going to get there. Postal service is very important to our citizens that prefer written communication. That includes legal documents, cards, checks, newspapers, even the small business down here on Main Street can have someone call up from the far distance town of Clifton Forge and order a product at 9:00 a.m. on Saturday morning, hoping to get it by Monday. It still hadn't left the Covington Post Office on Monday. So urge you in some of your reading to look into this because small business, them being able to get their product into a home is very, very important. And sitting here for an additional 48 hours before there's a possibility of it leaving, it's kind of tough because normally that customer, they can't get that package, Amazon Prime will say, we'll have it there Monday, and our local small business has lost out. So as a collective group, as a citizen, not a city employee, as a citizen, if you need additional information, how to research some of this, I'd gladly share it with you. Thank you very much.
All right, moving on, corrections of agenda. This is for the work session meeting December 3rd of '24, regular meeting December the 10th of '24, and called meeting for auditing purposes December the 20th of '24. Two council ladies work with us for where they'll vote, so it'll just be us three. So somebody needs to make a motion and somebody second.
I'll make a motion for two seconds.
All in favor? We want to recognize, I don't see either one of them here, of retirement for Teresa Harris, our treasurer, and David Kimberlin, which is supervisor up at the landfill. They're no longer with us, but they did a great job while they were here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. Appreciate you recognizing these folks on behalf of this city. I have a plaque here and a card that will be presented to Teresa A. Harrison in recognition and appreciation for 20 years of dedicated service to the City of Covington in our treasurer's office from 2004 to 2024, presented by the Covington City Council. So we thank Teresa for her years of service in our treasurer's department and wish her the very best in retirement and the next page in her life. So much appreciation to Teresa. Also, you mentioned David Kimberlin, a recognition and appreciation for 27 years of dedicated service to the City of Covington Public Works Department, 1997 to 2024, also presented by the Covington City Council. David started back in 1997. He's worked at our public works office. He's worked at Cedar Hill Cemetery and he's also been involved up at the Peters Mountain Landfield for a number of years, serving as our superintendent up there. And for those of you who don't realize, Peters Mountain, our landfill, it's in a world all to itself up there. And as of a day like today, it's not real pleasant to be up there working with that kind of weather. So thanks to David, thanks to Teresa, and we wish them all best in their retirement endeavors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Al. Report of city manager, if anybody's there.
Okay, thank you. If you don't mind, I want to sadly kind of start off on a little somber note. Most folks here do know that Mr. Rob Bennett passed away not too long ago. Rob certainly served our school system as a teacher, as an administrator. He served our city as a councilman and mayor for a number of years. Rob cared about Covington. Rob cared about our kids. Having been involved with the Parks and Recreation Department for a number of years, Rob and I have worked diligently together with our children. And there were many of office calls that involved Alan Dressler and Mr. Bennett and a child to get an understanding of the value of reading, writing and arithmetic and playing sports. So he will be missed. God bless and be with his family, Cindy and his daughter, and wish them all the best during this most difficult time. Also, within the week, Ozzy Hotstepp passed away. Ozzy was currently serving on our planning commission, but Ozzy too was very involved in our community, our kids. He coached for a number of years in youth sports, basketball, football, baseball. He had three pretty good sons that were very good athletes, but Ozzy coached a lot of kids, referred to as, of course, as coach around the community by his kids, served a lot of hot dogs at Casey Field for the Covington Quarterback Club. And like I said, most recently has served the City of Covington on our planning commission. And to Ozzy's three sons and his wife Carolyn, our heart goes out to them again in this most difficult time. I think the services for Ozzy are this Friday evening at Eric Funeral Home, 6 o'clock for those that will be able to attend. Okay, a couple other things. As most are aware, we had an incident this morning down in the alley between Marion and Lexington Avenue. Unfortunate, but I will say kudos, Chris Smith, our EMS, our fire department, we were on it. I have had a lot of compliments from our school system on the way we handled the situation this morning and throughout the course of the day. Kudos to our public work staff and we're moving on. An incident happened, it's been repaired and we will move on to Wednesday, tomorrow. So, but again, many, many thanks to our emergency service folks and their attendance to the matter and working with our local school system. Been a tough week with weather. We work in it regardless. Kudos to our refuge department. We know we were able to get into a few alleys due to the snow and ice. I think we have caught up as of the end of the day on Friday. We were back on normal runs this week, but again, kudos to those. Think about them tomorrow. It's going to be cold. We will think about you folks, but it's going to be pretty nasty the next few days. But again, signal out our refuge department, we continue to make good water over the course of this season and these cold days. We've continued to take care of wastewater and again, we take care of refuge at Peters Mountain Landfield. And it's a little different weather on the top of that mountain than it is down here. And we've got three guys that are dedicated to the cause. We had some challenges Monday morning. We did not pick up refuge in the City of Covington. We had to close Peters Mountain Landfield, but they took it upon themselves to work on the road, which is a road that's maintained by the Department of Transportation, but they had other responsibilities and we got our road open and we were back in business on Tuesday morning. So thank you to our landfill staff. Then above and beyond, thank you to our public works and our recreation for the hustling around town. A lot of folks don't understand, but when we get snows, we have a responsibility to the thoroughfares throughout Covington, the main passageways on Route 220 from the entrance into the city all the way out to the end of Dry Run, Craig, of course, down Jackson, Route 18 and Route 60 that follows up from King's Tire up there to the Rosedale Bridge. We cut passageway to get cars in and out and they work through the night in different shifts on Sunday night and through the course of the day on Monday. Communication was very good with Alan Dressler throughout and we appreciate their dedication and the hard work. For those that have not, we've all probably shoveled snow this time. We shoveled ice, but to be in that truck moving, it's not as easy as it looks. And we know there are times when Alan may have cleaned his driveway or his sidewalk and they piled me back in, but we apologize for that, but that's, it happens. So we work hard at what we do to get people the passageway. We were open Monday morning, first thing here at City Hall. There were some questions about that, but that's okay because as we sat right here in a staff meeting, we counted six people at 8:30 to 9:00 o'clock that came in the doors for city services. So we were open for business. So thanks to all those folks. Old Town Covington, as well as our small business coordinator, kudos to Terry. The governor just recently announced the advancement of Old Town Covington into a Virginia Main Street program. We still got a few more steps to go through. Our next big step will be the Old Town and the hiring of an executive director. I hope folks understand the value of being a Virginia Main Street program. It opens the doors to grant possibilities and we're working hard, our city, what we're, our improvements in our downtown that has been recognized, the efforts on Maple Avenue, working along with the Department of Transportation and the city budgets to improve the three phases that we've done there, the construction and development of our little pocket park, a gathering spot for your citizens, for your businesses, and then the process that is ongoing right now up on the other end of Maple with some artwork and some improvements, cosmetic improvements to our public works department and so forth. So we look forward to continuing working with Old Town Covington and we are much appreciative of the governor's recognition right during the holiday season and anxious about moving forward. A couple other things as I wrap up, we had some brand new playground equipment installed last week, wrapped up on Friday over at the Jackson Rivers Ford Complex. It will be a wonderful complement to our mini putt-putt facility that we are developing. As I've explained to folks, you come over with a couple of children, little Johnny may want to putt-putt, but Suzie is not into that and we have play equipment to accommodate her and mom and dad can sit in a wonderful cabana in the back and take it all in and compliment what a nice place that we have for families to recreate. The Casey Field House project, if you see what's happened, blocks have been laid. Again, I walk through once or every other week or so and it's just amazing. And as I told you some time ago, as I walked down the ramp not too long ago, I could imagine the fight song and running out on Casey Field on a Friday night. It's a pretty exciting project and look forward to wrapping it up and getting underneath food and outfitting and make some corrections there for our officials, our visiting team, as well as the citizens attending the games for new restroom facilities for the men and the women. Finally, want to let you know that we will be opening bids. We have received bids for the paving of the Mid-City Mall parking lot. Our intention is to develop a nice sidewalk along our businesses there at Mid-City Mall. There will probably be a period of time that it will be an interruption, but the benefit long term will be absolutely wonderful. And we will communicate with our businesses and make all possible means of access to getting in and not interrupt their day-to-day operations. But we're excited about the sidewalk. We're excited about some curving and identification of our landscape and signage out there. And speaking of signage, we're getting closer each day to getting involved in our weight binding sign project that we, as a city, have worked with the Allegheny Chamber of Commerce and Tourism and those will be in place over the next few months. With that, I wrap up. Sorry about, but it's been a while since we seen each other. Welcome Susan Wolf, welcome Susan Crowder to city council and we look forward to working with you ladies and our council and continue to move Covington in the right direction. Any questions?
John has said artwork up on the end of Maple. It's really nice. It's pleasant to see you.
Thank you, thank you. The vision there is it will become a place of communication once we complete our college park, as we'll refer to right now, the green space and public works. When we have events there, the artwork on the back of the public works building with the train and the flowers and then the artwork on the depot, it's a conversation piece and I appreciate that. We've already had a number of people go take pictures. The work that we did on the road, street, I don't know that the paint had dried before people were getting pictures for the dances and things like that. So arts are important to the Allegheny Highlands and we will continue doing some things along that line.
It burns it up and makes a gold concrete wall, get something to look at.
Appreciate that, sir. Thank you.
Also, Alan, I don't know if the citizens know, but the snow, like you said, wasn't easy to move. It's been cold, it's been refreezing every night. And for the people that cleared these roads this time, were brand new employees, they'd never pushed snow. So I think it did a pretty good job.
They were white knuckled. But they did well. And for those members of council, if you really want to know how much snow we just collect off of our downtown areas, feel free to go down to Main Street Park, there's quite a pile down there. And we've had contractors that have stepped up to help us out. We could not have done without some of our local contractors and they were Johnny on the spot to assist the City of Covington and our downtown businesses. Thank you, folks.
Appointments, we're going to not do those tonight. We're going to wait and do them at the next meeting because we need to get a little bit more information and therefore appointments that council has to go on. All right, I'm going to turn it over to its ordinance and resolutions and we'll turn it over to Vice Mayor.
All right, R. 25-01, resolution to petition the Allegheny Circuit Court to suspend the need for a special election to fill a constitutional office vacancy. Want to just read them all and go on?
I want to.
Just do it one time. Anybody?
You can do each individually or you can do them jointly.
We'll do them jointly.
Okay, that's for the treasurer's office.
R. 2502, Parks and Recreation, a litter grant, additional funding received from state above the budget amount with no city match. Resolution R. 2503, B. side walk grant, 20% city match.
Excuse me, but that's the project we're working on from beach to pad with the Department of Transportation.
R. 2504, Community Basis Policing Contributions, Walmart, no city match. R. 2505, Dare Police Department, Dare Contributions, Expenses, Public Contribution for the Dare Program. And ordinance O. 2501 to amend and reenact the City Code, Chapter 42, Section 42.2, Refund of Taxes Erroneously Assessed.
Okay, we need a vote on a back.
We got to make the motion. Make a motion to the Assembly.
Is that going to?
Yeah, I'll say.
All right, back to you, we're all calling this.
Okay, so that's for the first one. R. 25, that's the other one.
Yeah, we're going to have a vote on the second.
Okay. So for R dash twenty-five, zero one, right, to petition the Allegheny Circuit Court for no need for special election.
Right.
Okay. Mrs. Crowder?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Wolf?
Four.
Mr. Forbes?
Four.
Mr. Carson?
Four.
Next one's consider resolution, R twenty-five oh-two, Parks and Recreation, it's grant money for cleaning up trash and different things, and we have no match, the city, it's free to the city.
Mrs. Crowder? Four. Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Wolf?
Four.
Mr. Forbes?
Four.
Mr. Carson?
Four.
To consider resolution, R twenty-five dash three, that's where V dot, we have a match of twenty percent of it, but V dot's going to pay for the rest on a sidewalk.
What sidewalk?
Beach. It's more from beach to path.
On Allegheny?
On Allegheny, yeah.
That was already in there, right?
Sir.
We talked about that.
Oh, yeah, it's, yeah, this is just the council proving the monies to keep moving forward, yeah.
So this is like money that we already have and we already have budgeted to use for this, or is this something that starts in July?
We received money in this project in two phases. This is the second phase. On those monies, the second phase, we received three hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars from V dot, and our match is seventy-eight thousand, two twenty.
So you already have that budgeted?
The total project amount is six hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars. And the other money was already in place from previous budgets.
Okay, thank you.
We good?
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's fine. It's better to ask a question than not. We're going to go R twenty-five.
Right, wait a minute. Mrs. Crowder?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Wolf?
Four.
Mr. Forbes?
Four.
Mr. Carson?
Four.
All right, we got R twenty-five oh-four, and that's the contribution from Walmart. That's for shopping, shop a cop, isn't that right, Chris?
It's a combination of different things.
Right.
Some chop, a cop, not a my dog.
But it didn't cost the city anything, it's money donated by Walmart. We need to take that.
Mrs. Crowder?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Wolf?
Four.
Mr. Forbes?
Four.
Mr. Carson?
Four.
The next one, it's a private citizen, it's R twenty-five oh-five, a private citizen donated two hundred and fifty dollars to the Dare Police Program. So it's no cost to the city, but the money has to go through us to get to the police department. So we need to vote on that now.
Mrs. Crowder?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Wolf?
Four.
Mr. Forbes?
Four.
Mr. Carson?
Four.
This is to consider ordinance O two-five oh-one, and we need to vote on that. That's just a change in the city code, chapter forty-two, section forty-two point two.
Mrs. Crowder?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Wolf?
Four.
Mr. Forbes?
Four.
Mr. Carson?
Four.
New business, if anybody's got any?
I actually do.
Okay.
So I was wondering if council could do a proclamation for Robert Bennett since he was a previous mayor?
We're good with that. For next time?
Yeah, we're good.
We have to have a, we have to draw it up and everything.
Okay, no, that's fine. I was just, I had brought it up with Mr. Dressler, he said it was a council decision.
Do we need to vote on that?
Yeah.
We just do it. Why don't we try to set up for the next vote?
We do it, yeah.
Well, you don't want to do it on the works session, or if you want to do it on regular day, maybe a family time.
The thing would be just touch base with Cindy and see what works best for her schedule. So if it's at a work session and it works best for her, that's what we would like to call that.
Just you going to check on it or?
Thank you, now.
Okay. All right, because I think you definitely ought to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody got anything else? I'm going to turn it over to the council and let you do the closed session.
Thank you.
You got us.
No, we don't want to, we're going to have to come back and turn.
Can I go ahead then? I have moved that city council enter a closed session, closed meeting for the limited purpose of number one, a discussion and consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the governing body's bargaining position related to the property located within the city and the county. And number two, a consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice related to foretend on main pursuant to section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven, A three and eight.
Okay. Let's go. We going to do it in here? We going up?
Yeah, we're moving. Yeah, it'll take ten minutes.
All right, take a ten-minute break, and then we'll meet over across the way.